Good afternoon. Welcome to the April 30th Policy Session of the Phoenix City Council. Thank you for joining us. We will begin with a roll call of council members.
Councilman DeCecio.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Garcia. Councilman Noakowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Waring.
Can you hear me?
Yes, is that you, Councilman Waring?
Could you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you. Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wadato.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here. Thank you. City Manager will begin with any updates from your office.
Thank you, Mayor. Just very briefly, given the governor's order yesterday that the stay-at-home executive order continues until May 15th, just wanted to let the council know we will be continuing our employees' telework and current working situations at least through May 15th. Thank you.
Mayor, this is Councilmember Garcia. I'm here.
Wonderful, thank you. We could see you on the screen, but we're all getting better with technology, so, thank you. Then we have all of the council with us. We will begin with an issue of huge importance to every member of the city council and one we've been working on at the city of Phoenix, an update on domestic violence prevention efforts. We are lucky that we have great expertise within our city, and we are also joined by Tasha Meniker, the co-CEO of the Arizona Coalition to End Sexual and Domestic Violence. Unless City Manager or Deanna, you have any additional introductory words? I think I will begin with Tasha, who is a real subject at Matter Expert and has been working with many city departments to make sure that we do our best to fight domestic violence, an issue that unfortunately has gotten us in the national spotlight and one that we think about the people we've lost in this community, including Commander Karnicle, because of issues related to domestic violence, so one that is so serious for us in Phoenix. Tasha, I see that you are muted. When you are unmuted, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mayor Gallego, members of the council, for the invitation to come and present, and of course, for your continued support and for survivors of sexual and domestic violence and your dedication to this issue. On behalf of the Arizona Coalition to End Sexual and Domestic Violence and our program members, we sincerely appreciate you. Just to give some context, I'm not sure how familiar the council members are with the Arizona Coalition to End Sexual and Domestic Violence. Every state and territory has a sexual assault coalition, a domestic violence coalition, or as we have here in Arizona, a dual coalition focusing on both issues. We are federally recognized, and our membership includes the direct service providers, so the sexual assault programs and domestic violence programs and shelters throughout the state. And our role for our program members is to provide them with training, support on best practices. We help with coordination efforts so that the leadership of these programs can work together to problem-solve and move this issue forward as a collaborative. We also engage in public policy advocacy and have a direct services helpline. So, I was asked today to provide a presentation, and I hope it's all right if I just do a brief verbal update. I plan to talk a little bit about some of the changes and adaptations that the coalition and the programs have had to make in light of the coronavirus, some trends we're seeing in terms of calls and changes in the types of calls that we've seen and some of our hypotheses around why that might be the case. I also wanted to talk about some of our proactive efforts and some of our prevention efforts that we've been engaging in, and then perhaps some program needs and some needs of the coalition. And of course, I'm happy to answer any questions. So, as Mayor Gallego noted, I think we're all fairly aware of the increased risk for domestic violence and sexual abuse in homes right now as a result of social isolation and stay-at-home measures. The coalition fortunately, and all the programs and shelters in the state of Arizona at this time are still open, so we are seeing some changes in how we are delivering services at this time. So, for those programs who are providing community-based services, so in other words, who would have been providing advocacy in person with survivors, whether that's at the survivor's home or out someplace safe in the community, those types of services have transitioned to remote for the most part. So, at this time, advocates are using telephones, they're using video conferencing to provide services. So, the services are the same, it's just the modality is different. So, for example, at the coalition, we are providing a support group every Tuesday for survivors, and that's now done through video conferencing. Many survivors continue to want in-person support, so the programs are, when it's safe, they are working to coordinate with survivors to put precautions in place and meet in person when it's possible. I know for our coalition at least, when we get callers who strongly would like to meet someone in person and they're in the valley, we refer them to the Phoenix Family Advocacy Center, as I know they're still open and still meeting folks in person, and we're very grateful that that's still available. As far as the shelters, though, shelters are still open, but they also have made adjustments. So, the shelters are complying with CDC recommendations, they're consulting with their local health departments, and they're putting measures in place to, as best as possible, ensure the safety and well-being of the residents and the staff. So, this includes things like, of course, sanitizing. Most communal spaces in the shelter at this time are not open, so that includes living rooms, things like that. Depending on the layout of the program depends on kind of the extent of the adjustments that a program might have to make. So, at this time, for programs that have individual rooms for survivors, that's working well because they can have one individual or one family in a room. For programs that have a little bit more of a dormitory style, they have made adjustments so that it's one individual or family per room, but what this means is that overall shelter capacity is a little bit less because of the social distancing measures. Also, survivors at this time are staying in shelter a little bit longer. There's just less options available for survivors in terms of affordable housing. Also, when we think about things like the social support that survivors might have otherwise had, at this time, because of concerns about health and safety, I think some of those options are decreasing for survivors. So, because we certainly aren't going to put anyone out onto the streets, survivors are staying in shelter a little bit longer at this time. What this means is, at least in Maricopa County, the programs have started using hotel vouchers for survivors when the shelters are full. So, at this time, any person who is in need of shelters, a result of domestic violence in Maricopa County, is getting some safe housing option. For the most part, at this time, that's through hotels. Overall, we have seen, interestingly, a decrease in calls to the programs. That's not true for every program, but the vast majority have actually reported that their calls are down. But, they are saying that their calls are lasting longer. So, victims who are calling in are in a little bit of a higher state of distress and despair as a result of COVID-19, and so we're hearing more suicidal ideation. We are seeing changes. For example, we hear we've been receiving calls from survivors who are whispering because the person who is harming them is in the next room. We also have seen abusers weaponizing COVID. So, we had one example of an abusive partner tearing up someone's health insurance card. That being said, outside of those things, many of the calls are similar to what we've seen prior to the pandemic. So, a lot of callers looking for legal services, orders of protection, and also basic needs, so access to food, rental assistance, utility assistance. Most survivors, if they are trying to get out of the situation or if they've just gotten out of the situation, need that support to get back on their feet, so that those are very common calls that we receive. We've also, interestingly, at our coalition, seen an increase in male callers and Spanish-speaking callers. We recently did an interview for Univision, and some of these callers have actually referenced that interview, and so I plan to talk a little bit about our partnership with the city of Phoenix for the Domestic Violence Help Awareness Campaign, but I really want to uplift the importance of these types of campaigns because we do receive calls from survivors who reference when they see programs in the media, when they see these types of campaigns. And it actually means different types of survivors get access to services who may not have been getting that access before, so that's very positive. Some of the reasons we believe for the decrease in calls is that, one, of course, survivors just have less access and freedom to make those types of phone calls than they did before because their kids and partner are home, or because they're not able to leave the home to go to work, so there's just less opportunity to make those calls. There's also, we're also concerned potentially that some survivors may not be aware that programs are open, so that again speaks to some of the proactive measures we're taking and the importance of these awareness campaigns. But also, not all survivors feel comfortable going into shelters, so especially during this time during the pandemic, I think some survivors might have concerns about communal living spaces, and so they may not realize the breadth of options that are available to them, so that's something for us to consider as well, uplifting the fact that there are resources outside of shelter. Ultimately, at the coalition, it's important for us to just let survivors know that help is available and resources are available. So, we've been doing a number of media interviews, I think we've done about 20 in the past month, and we're supporting the programs and doing press releases and interviews themselves to get the word out about services that are available. I mentioned our partnership with the city of Phoenix. We're very grateful for that, for the Domestic Violence Help Campaign and with the Phoenix Police Department. I think it's through these campaigns that we are, that these are the best ways, I think, to get the information out to the public. We're also at the coalition exploring partnerships with some new organizations for us, so for example, the National Grocers Association. We've been looking at ways that we can put up flyers or other information in the locations that survivors still have access to, included in that is the parks. So, we've been looking at national and state and city parks and seeing where we can post information about the programs and national and local hotlines and helplines. And I think at this time, what's really important is to get the messaging out also to family, friends, loved ones of people who might be getting harmed at this time. We've been providing those folks with tools to intervene safely and privately if they believe someone they love or care about is being hurt, and giving them some tips and tricks and suggestions to do that in a sensitive way, and also to provide those resources if the survivor's not able to access them, those resources themselves. As I mentioned, the coalition's role in this process has really been providing tools and support to the programs. So, on our end, we've been, we've provided the programs with recommended shelter practices, for example, as we navigate COVID-19, as well as creative outreach methods, ways to do remote advocacy successfully, and how to engage in self-care. We have a COVID-19 specific landing page at the coalition, so that's a good resource for programs and survivors to look into, to get those types of resources and get policy updates and just health updates. At this point, I would say, some of the needs of the programs are, of course, financial. I think one of our concerns is that we will see a sharp increase in calls from survivors as stay-at-home measures and social distancing measures are loosened, survivors are going to have more access to make those phone calls, they may feel a little bit more safe to go into shelter, and so we anticipate a sharp increase in people needing help. And so, some of the things that we're considering is how we might prepare for that as the coalition and as programs. A number of the programs are low on revenue, and our revenue right now is low as well because we had to push fundraising events into the next fiscal year, so I think we're all navigating at this time how to meet the needs of survivors and the needs of our staff. Also, I think some additional needs of the programs are the same things that many people need at this time, paper products, sanitizing products, food for survivors, so whether that's gift cards to provide survivors for some of these basic needs, and then also technology for both advocates and survivors. As we move in kind of into this new reality, I imagine some of these things probably will sustain, and in some ways, that's a positive thing of this experience for the programs and the coalition, is we're actually more accessible to a broader range of survivors. But, if we want to maintain that moving forward, we need to look at advancing the technology that we all have and what's available to people in the programs. So, those are some different areas that we're looking at at this time. Another area for us moving forward is figuring out how to do prevention and outreach with people who are committing the harm, so that's something that we're brainstorming around, how people might intervene in those situations, or how we might provide support so that people who are thinking about committing harm or who have committed harm can find help and support to prevent and stop those behaviors. So, that's all I had. I'm happy to answer any questions that the mayor or the council may have.
Thank you, Tasha. A very important message for everyone in Phoenix to hear, and I think one that council members can help echo, services are still available if you are experiencing domestic violence, and we can do them in a way that is sensitive to COVID. So, I hope all of us who have platforms can help spread that word. Can you talk a little bit more about remote services that are available? Can you text if you are in a crisis situation and don't want to make a phone call?
Mayor, that's an excellent question. So, both the national domestic violence and the national sexual assault hotlines have text and chat capacity, as does our helpline at the coalition. Most of the programs also have this available where you can text or chat with someone if that's your preference, and as I'm sure you're aware, in Maricopa County, there's also the option to text 911. And so, these are all really good options for survivors potentially, and of course, not every situation is the same, but that might be an alternative for someone who is stuck at home right now with someone who's hurting them.
And I thought a great reminder or message for council members who are speaking with people who speak Spanish, to remind them that service is available as well. So, thank you for, it is a challenge to serve in this time, but we are grateful to have you as a partner. One of the reasons I wanted to put this on the agenda right now is the incredible urgency. Another was the fact that this week, we marked Denim Day, so I wanted to ask our staff, or Tasha, if someone could explain, maybe Marcel, what is Denim Day?
Yes, Mayor Gallego, and members of the city council. Denim Day centers around a case in Italy back in the early 90s where there was an individual, a young woman, who was a victim of sexual assault, and when it went before the Italian court, it was ruled that the individual who assaulted her sexually was justified, if you will, in doing so because the victim was wearing jeans. And so, of course, that was the obvious outrage, and many folks coalesced and lobbied around that and said to bring awareness to sexual assault and that it truly is a crime regardless of what you are wearing. National Denim Day was created, and in the city of Phoenix, of course, we support that thanks obviously to the support of the mayor and the city council and our city manager. And it really is a day to bring awareness in a very specific way that this is a crime that truly individuals don't bring it on, that it is illegal, and that we need to make sure that our community is aware that sexual assault is serious, it happens, and in essence, no is no, and when that happens, we need to be bringing individuals to court and we need to be prosecuting, as well as we need to be providing the support services for those individuals.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you, Director Franklin, and please let our folks know at the Family Advocacy Center, the kind words from Tasha, and how essential their services are right now. And then, Tasha, I wanted to ask you, or maybe it could be a question for our city staff as well, could you explain what an order of protection is and whether it is still available for those who need it during COVID-19?
Sure. So, orders of protection and injunctions against harassment are both still available. To my understanding, the majority of the courts are still open at this time to do hearings for orders of protection, so that's something that, one of the primary calls that we received to our helpline, so it is important to get that word out to survivors. And I want to add, there are also lay-legal advocates who are available through the Family Advocacy Center and other programs who can help survivors navigate that process, and I think that's very important for survivors to know.
Councilmember, questions or comments? Well, thank you so much for this very important update. I think a lot of information that I will try to push out. We are grateful that you are still fighting the fight in these difficult circumstances, and I hope for those members of the media who are watching that they will highlight this important information as well because we do want survivors in our community to know that there are still services available, and we would encourage you to pursue them, and you can pursue them, and stay safe from the virus. So, thank you for interrupting your very busy work to join us, and good luck out there.
Thank you so much, Mayor and council. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Next, we will move to item B on our agenda, the Coronavirus Relief Fund Proposed Strategic Plan, and I will turn it over to our city manager to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor. I will introduce it, and actually, I'm going to take it through on this. The Coronavirus Relief Fund, it's a proposed strategic plan. We'll get the, we'll get the presentation up here in just a second. I did have an opportunity to speak with each council member in the last couple of weeks, talked to other city managers, and read the federal guidance, and so with that, sort of similar to a trial budget where the manager puts something out and then people react, assembled all that feedback from folks and put together a trial strategic plan for the COVID Relief Fund. There is an expiration date on these funds, so time is of the essence. So, today, what we want to talk about is a discussion of a proposed strategic plan, and why a strategic plan in this case. There is a world of great ideas to be done in this area, but we, because the time is so short and the money is limited, we have to focus. Each dollar we choose to spend on one thing is a dollar that can't be spent on something else, and there's a literal defined pot here, so I think it's important for us to put this together around a strategy. We want to seek federal, I'm sorry, council feedback and direction on this, from this starting point today, and then, it's not final today, not asking for a vote today, but really for feedback so that we can return as early as next Tuesday for further direction and to bring any type of revision or information that you would seek. So, just to bring everybody up to speed on what it is, the Federal Cares Act was signed into law in response to the COVID-19 pandemic in March by the federal government. It's $2 trillion. One component of the Cares Act, Section 5001, is a Coronavirus Relief Fund that is specifically designated for states and for, then for cities and counties greater than 500,000 population, a pool of $150 billion, of which Phoenix's share is $293 million for COVID-19 relief. To put that in perspective with our peer cities, again, this is a way that the census is really important because the money was allocated to cities based on population on a formula. We're the fifth-largest city, we receive the fifth-largest amount of money. The other important thing about this slide is that, my guess is that these will be the top cities for scrutiny, both publicly and by federal auditors when this is done. So, we must be very careful and scrupulous in following the guidance with these funds because the world is watching. So, you see where we are with the top seven cities, and then our sister cities here in Arizona, that receive funding, Tucson and Mesa. Federal guidance on use of funds, we often talk about being frustrated with voluminous federal guidance. In this case, they've given us a break, there's really only three pages of federal guidance on the allowable use of the funds. The costs that are charged to the fund are only covered if they're incurred for necessary expenditures related to COVID-19. They must not be accounted for already in the currently approved budget, and they must have been incurred and spent between March 1st and December 30th of this year. And just for perspective, that's coming up sooner than we would like to think, it's starting to get hot, it's hard to think about December 30th, but it is less than 250 days that we have to organize ourselves and spend the funds. More specifically, the guidance talks about allowable expenses and categories, and you'll see this come back as I talk about the strategic plan proposal. So, medical expenses are allowed as relates to facilities, testing, our emergency transportation, our ambulance service, and telemedicine, all of those as they relate to COVID-19. Some cities have hospitals, we do not, but medical expenses are allowed to be covered and reimbursed. Public health is called out, which is costs incurred for communicating orders for public health, PPE for city employees, sanitizing city facilities, and any public safety measures necessary to enforce guidelines. The third area called out is payroll for city employees mitigating or responding to COVID-19. Fourth category was facilitating compliance with public health orders and helping people to do that, such as food delivery to seniors, distance learning required because of social distancing, telework, the paid leave for people who are affected by COVID-19 in the city, jail expenses if they relate to COVID-19, and aiding homeless populations. And finally, the final category they gave was economic support whereby grants to small businesses to reimburse for disruption costs due to the economic disruption of the pandemic, or local payment support programs is called out. So, given that background, I'm just proposing for your discussion today a strategic plan framework that involves three main areas, three large groupings, and then some sub-areas or pillars under each one of these. The first would be a community investment grouping, second would be reimbursement or payment for city operations, and the third for consideration is reserving some of the funds for future needs. Now, by future, I mean like two months or three months from now, because there is, as I said, time is of the essence and there is an expiration date here. We'll walk through, I'll walk through each of these, reflect the conversations that I've had, noting that there are six sub-areas or pillars under each of the first two, community investment and city operations, and then discuss the reserve a little bit more. Also important to remember, this is one-time funding, it is not ongoing, so funding a program that will continue after December 30, the people are in that, really is not wise, particularly given our situation. So, we want to talk about community investment, and I'll emphasize also, we want to use existing processes or programs wherever possible to streamline and expedite our programming. So, business and employee assistance is something I know that the council has been focused on. That could be something, as we've already done, a small business assistance loan program through the Industrial Development Authority and the Arizona Community Foundation. We spoke, Chris Mackey was here two days ago and spoke about our small business situation. We noted that the IDA program funded with the Arizona Community Foundation had run out of funding, and that there are approximately 60 businesses qualified that there was not funding available for, so that would be an example. Also, I've heard about microenterprises or, you know, non-traditional businesses such as artists or one- and two-person employee groupings, and that would be an area to consider. Job training for displaced workers or retraining for COVID-19 response would be a potential area that you could, if focused properly on COVID-19, we could consider. Second under community investment would be utility assistance. We do have some experience with that already through our Water Services Department, individual utilities have assistance. This could be a program for both individuals and businesses who are affected by COVID-19 economic disruption. We would have to be very clear and specific that the utility assistance is caused by a disruption from COVID-19, and so other issues that relate to people being behind on utilities or the amount that they were behind before COVID-19 wouldn't be eligible, but you could do something in the utility assistance area. Mitigation and care for homeless populations, the council had a really strong discussion and approved a strategy a little more than a week ago with that. That is an area you could expand upon if you would like with these funds, dealing with things like rent mortgage help to prevent eviction. Third in community investment could be food delivery, the issue of food security or insecurity. We are spending money delivering seniors the food that they would normally receive from our physical senior centers. We know that school districts are serving our youth, 18 and under can get served at schools, and the food banks that serve everyone, families, may also be an area that the council would want to consider in community investment. Fourth would be distance learning and Wi-Fi access. This is something we've heard about in terms of students, the The pandemic has really emphasized the digital divide in our society. Those with easy and regular access to quality internet are more able to take advantage of school and city and other services while those who don't have that are left behind. We also see that many of our community who depended on our libraries as their source of internet, of course, because we had to close our libraries, they no longer have that access. So finding ways to provide community access to online city services, student access to learning, could be an eligible expense if that's what the council asked us to do. And finally, under community investment, better health outcomes and community testing is what I heard conversation about. How do we ensure broad testing, especially in our underserved communities? Is there a possibility of assisting Maricopa County Public Health with contact tracing in coordination with testing? And does the city need to acquire some public health expertise to advise us in our decision-making? All those are potential strategic areas under those six pillars for community investment with the funds. The next area, city operations.
Councilwoman, yes.
Can you go back to assist Maricopa County Public Health with contact tracing? What is that? Could you please give me some clarity on that? Is it providing numbers or?
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman. I don't have that perfectly formed. I think one of the things we hear is that testing is important, but it's important to be followed with contact tracing so that you can make sure that the population is able to isolate if needed. I think what this would be is if, if there are some resources that Maricopa County Public Health needed in terms of, do we have city employees who currently don't have work to do because our libraries are closed or we don't have a parks program or whatever it is? Could we loan those folks to Maricopa County Public Health to bolster their contact tracing? I've not had any communication with Maricopa County about this idea, it's just given as an example of something we might consider.
Okay, so it's really following up and assisting other agencies?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next strategic area would be city operations. Much of this would be reimbursement for things we're already doing or have done. So of course, employee testing for COVID-19 is very important and it's clearly something that can be paid for through our coronavirus response funds. And the city has initiated employee testing. We could expand it greatly using these funds when there's availability of testing. Public safety measures, the second area of city operations. Of course, our police and fire respond and enforce COVID-19 orders. Our fire department responds to COVID-19 calls, those are reimbursable. Emergency medical transport, our ambulance service when they have to work with COVID-19 patients, that is reimbursable. Our Parks and Recreation Department has had to restrict, has restricted and closed in part some of our parks facilities. Those costs to do that and to enforce it are reimbursable. Medical and protective supplies, we've all learned the acronym PPE, personal protective equipment. That is allowable expense. Of course, our police and fire, we focus on giving them that, but we have many other city employees in our operations where we've had to procure PPE. And as an example in this, I'll tell you, our Chief Financial Officer has submitted a request that will be on the council agenda on Wednesday coming up. For the amount that we have ordered in PPE and other COVID-related expenses is about $20 million. We've ordered that, we have not received nearly that much. We have placed orders for that and we anticipate that much more in orders for a total of $20 million that we'll be seeking funding for. That would be reimbursable from this fund. Third, in city operations, of course, cleaning and sanitizing, we've all become sensitive to that need and so the cleanings in public transit, our extra street cleanups, what we've had to do in city facilities. Interestingly, you think about, we contract with Maricopa County for jail costs, so if Maricopa County incurs COVID-related expenses in the jail, that they would need to, they will bill those to us and we would need to reimburse those through, we could reimburse those through this fund. Or our own central booking facility where we've had to spend money to make that COVID-19 compliant, we would get reimbursed for that as well. Fourth would be payroll expense reimbursement and management oversight for COVID-19 and of course, our police expenses, we've talked about fire, human services has had to deploy folks to work on this, emergency management personnel, Parks and Recreation and also is reimbursable for all city employees where the federally required COVID-19 leave is in effect, we can apply for reimbursement from these funds for this as well. Next, building a COVID-19 resilient future. This would be investing in things that will make, that will take advantage of the situation for ourselves now, reimburse for what we've had to spend, but also preparing ourselves for what the future might look like when we have to have our employees farther apart, for example. So, what we spend on telework to get our employees appropriately out of our buildings, socially distanced where possible, those expenses are reimbursable. 911 telemedicine, you can get into a phase where you do some work over the, over a video conference with a patient calling 911 so you know how to effectively deploy your resources. Employee workspace retrofit, we're certainly going to have to rethink how our buildings are configured at the city of Phoenix and how our employees are fit into workspace. Public facility retrofits, our libraries, I know council members have talked about how we're going to have to think about the rows of computers in our libraries much differently, our senior centers and our Parks and Recreation facilities. Public transit, we've talked about moving forward with shielding our bus drivers more permanently and that would be something we would consider with these funds. So that's the second large area, community investment, city operations, and I'll end with the third area that I would recommend, which is to reserve some funds for future needs. And again, by future, I'm talking about summer and fall because again, this $293 million must be spent by December 30th of this year. So, what are our future needs? Currently, the federal guidance explicitly says that this money may not be used to replace the loss of revenue from the economic downturn. However, as you all have been engaged in, many of you have written letters and advocated at the federal level and we have some of our federal delegation advocating that that guidance should be changed because as we have been preparing at the city, budget deficits may be coming to us because of the drop in economic activity and the loss of sales taxes. So, if the federal government were to change its guidance and there is some indication that they may do that or they are strongly considering it, we would want to be sure to have funds available that we could use so that we would not be having to deeply cut our budget and our programs in the next fiscal year. So that would be one reason to keep some money in reserve for a couple of months and then we can check in every month on regular intervals about that. There could be potential expenses if COVID-19 recurs in the summer, the fall or in the winter. So there would be some need to perhaps have some money saved in case we get another wave where we have to find PPE or something we haven't thought of yet. And of course, this money would be available for reassignment by the city council to other COVID needs and again, I would propose that if we do this, we would want to have regular, you know, every two weeks or every monthly check-ins with the council about how we're doing and whether that needs to occur. But just to, just to end, to talk about the estimated revenue loss, I asked our Budget and Research Department to take a look at what we would say is our estimated revenue loss from March 1st through December 30th of this year. So just in order of magnitude, this informed our decision-making in the scenarios that our Deputy City Manager Jeff Barton gave us on our budget. But estimated general fund sales tax, state shared revenue and user fees, based on your scenario of how deep the recession is, between March 1 and December 30th, could be between $48 and $100 million of revenue that we estimate that we're losing because of the economic downturn. Then there's a whole other set of sales taxes that we collect outside the general fund, but they are for important things that we all think about. Our public safety funds, our Park and Preserve Initiative funds, Transit 2050, sports facility and convention center, which have to do with hotel taxes, rental car taxes and construction taxes. Those estimated losses are between $54 and $98 million. So in all, we estimate a revenue loss by our Budget and Research Department somewhere between $100 and $200 million in this next nine months. And so, as it says, currently that is not an allowable use of coronavirus relief funds, but it's something that I would encourage us to think about as, as we think about a strategic plan allocation, that we have some money available because as we get to the summer and have to review our budget, we've asked our departments to begin laying out potential cuts up to 25%. This is money, if the guidance has changed, that could be available to help us not have to cut our budget as deeply as we might otherwise. So, Mayor, members of council, in conclusion, I bring to you this proposed strategic plan as a trial for your consideration, feedback, direction, questions, input, and as I said, can return to council as early as next Tuesday for any further direction, follow-up or another rendition of this based on the input from the council. So with that, Mayor, members of council, I'd be happy to answer any question.
Wonderful, thank you, City Manager. We have two longtime partners of the Phoenix City Council with us on the phone, so I'm going to go ahead and take those two testimonies first. We will begin with Rusty Foley, followed by Michael Hughes.
Can you all hear me?
We can.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. I'm Rusty Foley. A lot of you may know me from my professional public affairs and arts involvements over the years. I am speaking purely as an individual, a long-term Phoenix citizen. I'm retired from my professional pursuits, but the severity of what's going on in our community has been of enough interest to me that I have been trying to follow your work on, your wonderful work really, on how you're leading us through this, through this crisis and how you're managing it and I appreciate that. I also appreciate seeing the notes in the City Manager's presentation about community investment, small businesses and a call-out to the arts. And I guess what I would like to do is just emphasize the damage that has been done to the arts and culture community through the, as a result of this COVID-19 crisis and encourage you to consider the arts as a part of your community investment efforts with the relief funds. The impact of arts in Phoenix is great and the damage that has been done by the COVID crisis is great. In good times, Arts and, nonprofit Arts and Culture generates about $400 million in economic activity for the city of Phoenix. $164 million of that is the direct spending by Arts and Culture, but another $237 million is the indirect spending, that what nonprofit Arts and Culture supporters spend in, on hospitality for retail services, for restaurants and that sort of thing. That's about a $1.40 return on investment and of course, that means that the, the arts have potential to be working.
Thank you, Rusty.
Pardon?
That was the timer going off.
Oh, okay. I just, as I say, the, let me just say, the loss, what we understand, we have arts organizations that have lost as much as, small ones that have lost from $10,000 to the larger ones who have lost $800,000 in revenue just in this last third quarter, which tends to be one of the biggest, the biggest fundraising quarter for arts organizations. And that's just losses to date. Quite likely, this will, this will get worse. Overall, Americans for the Arts has collected data that tells us that $2.6 million has been lost by the arts in Arizona and half of that is attributed just to the city of Phoenix. So it, the numbers are big numbers for the arts community and some assistance will allow it, that sector to recover and to continue to contribute to the recovery of the rest of the Arizona, Phoenix economy. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your advocacy for the arts and I think there's going to be a National Endowment for the Arts grant coming our way very soon, but also a good flag for this allocation of federal dollars. Next, we will turn to Michael Hughes.
Thank you, Mayor Gallego, city council members. I would just like to make a kind of a brief comment. My name again is Michael Hughes and AnewLeaves runs many shelters, including the homeless programs, including La Maceta Family Homeless Shelter, East Valley Men's Center, Bay House, Women's Crisis Center. And I just want to basically say that I want to promote very strongly that this is an opportunity for the individual cities to identify how we can better work together and form some type of regional approach to our homeless population and candidly stating not have the bulk of the funding pressure on Phoenix and Mesa. This funding could go a long way, in my opinion, in alleviating the pressure that is on tasks of downtown campus and get us to redistribute these challenges into a more regional geographic approach, which I think would be very helpful in combating this problem that is basically an epidemic. Thank you.
Thank you and thank you for your leadership on fighting homelessness, addressing workforce issues, helping keep our kids safe. While we have you, will you give us a quick update on, I think you are going to be opening a new facility in partnership with Maricopa County to help us fight homelessness? Oh, I may have already, I'm sorry, he may, I didn't warn him I was going to do that.
That's okay. A couple of things we're doing, we have a 50-bed site in South Scottsdale that we are working with county that is now taking some space for individuals that are elderly and at risk of COVID-19 virus. And also with the city of Mesa, I would like to even know that we are looking at expanding an additional, adding an additional 20 to 25 beds with this funding. So we are trying to do what we can do and again, I think it's in cooperation. The county was instrumental in making the Scottsdale site an opportunity. City of Mesa is doing that with the East Valley Men's Center. And again, I'm just promoting very strongly that if we can get clearer direction on how all of the cities can be more together, I think it could alleviate some of the pressure that is at the hub in downtown Phoenix.
Thank you, really appreciate and that's a good call because Maricopa County and Mesa and others have received these funds as well, as well as the state of Arizona, so we can accomplish more if we do it in partnership. Councilmember Garcia and then Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you. I have some process questions for add in regards to, I've heard that there's already some expenditures that we hope that we're probably going to reimburse, so I think what would be helpful, first question is, do you have an estimate of how much that would be so that we know how much is left for programs moving forward? And then I have two more things. One is, how do you want to move forward with the discussion, Mayor? I would suggest it'd be easier if we go through each section rather than, because I have notes and points for each section and I want to just blurt them all out, so maybe we can go through each section and hear each of our comments on it. And then the other thought I had that wasn't mentioned is a thought of having both an equity or a finance, and a financial auditor, because this is such a huge amount, I think we need to be conscious of making sure that it's dispersed in an equitable way and also that we're covering our, making sure that it's, that it's, that everything's tied. So being so much money, I don't know if that's someone that we either reassign internally or just making sure that someone's responsible for, for this amount of money. or just making sure that someone's responsible for this amount of money.
Mayor, Councilmember Garcia.
I will let the City Manager respond, and then I will respond if that works.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. As it relates to the estimate of expenses, the ones that I know right now is our Chief Financial Officer Denise Olson has purchase orders in, or has already spent money on PPE and other COVID-related expenses for about $20 million. That is, again, is a purchase order that will be coming for the council. We will have to do another, an estimate of what I indicated in other places, which was the payroll expenses that we've done already, the COVID-related leaves. So we'll do an estimate of those, Councilmember, as quickly as we can here. Your other suggestion, which I think is really important, is the financial oversight of this. It's not clear that we can use the COVID money to do that, but I have talked to the city auditor, and he has put a significant amount of work anticipating financial audits of our COVID funds into his work plan with his staff. So even if not reimbursable by COVID, we can absolutely use our audit staff to do that. But we will seek guidance from Treasury about that. And then your other component of the equity audit to ensure the equitable distribution across all parts of our community, that is something I have in talking with other city managers and reading, seeing some other cities are doing very conscientiously. And that would certainly be an approach that the city council could ask to take. Whether it's reimbursable, we'll have to figure out, but it may be something that we want to do, whether reimbursable through these funds or not, by redeploying other city resources to that effort.
Thank you, City Manager. And I think, I will next go to Councilwoman Stark, since I already called on her, but I would be comfortable going through it, topic by topic. I don't think we should yet, I think, really talk about what are the priorities, but I don't know that we are at the point today where we can put numbers on most of these items, although we did talk at our council meeting on Tuesday about perhaps moving forward on one small business program. But generally, I think we can't put final numbers on this yet. And I was a little bit optimistic with some of the statements coming out of the US Senate that change previous guidance and give at least some hope that they may, either the Treasury Department or the US Senate may adapt the guidance to give cities some flexibility, particularly around our great workforce challenges. So much of our existing workforce is responding to COVID-19, and it seems only fair that we support them. And it seems like there is now more of a political possibility that that might happen, which would help us address really great challenges. After we go to Councilwoman Stark, I may come back to the City Manager and ask if he can give us a little bit of an update on some of the hiring and furloughs, or furloughs and different challenges other cities are facing. But I think it seems like a fine proposal, we'll go to Councilwoman Stark. Quick question to the City Manager, and then we can go, beginning with community investment, and talk about some of those ideas. So Councilwoman Stark, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Mayor, actually, you pretty much said what I was going to say. I think that we probably should go by each category, but not assign numbers yet, but see where our priorities are, and then allow staff to go back and look at that, and then establish numbers to our priorities. You know, for example, I think as we move forward, we're going to have to do more and more online, so I think we need to look at that. Obviously, I think we need to keep some in reserves, especially if Congress decides to change the qualifications. So if we can just kind of go through each of them, and then maybe set priorities and leave the number crunching to the staff, that's what I like to see. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And City Manager, could you just give us a little bit of an update of what some of the other cities are doing in terms of workforce, and how they've been impacted?
Mayor, probably the most notable one for us here in the West has been the city of Los Angeles, which has indicated significant furlough and/or salary reductions for the staff in the city of Los Angeles, based on their projections of their economic circumstances. And certainly here in the Valley, we know that a couple of the East Valley cities have furloughed part-time staff, and it seems to be particularly around their Parks, Recreation, Library areas, where they've let go or furloughed staff. Here at the city of Phoenix, we have not taken that step at this point. We have hunkered down and frozen hiring for all but the most essential workers, and really stopped spending as much as possible in order to get ourselves through this fiscal year, and for the council then to be able to assess with economic data that will be coming to us in June, what the next steps would be for us. But certainly throughout the country, there are reports daily and weekly of other cities who have already had to go to layoffs and furloughs.
Thank you. We will go next to community investment, and perhaps I would propose we take business and employee assistance together with utility assistance, and then we'll go on, after we go through those, to, and take homelessness and food supply together. So thoughts on business assistance and utility assistance? Councilwoman, was that? I'm sorry, who wanted to speak?
I can go. Okay. And so, I agree with you all that we need to make sure to do it right, but I also know that there's a huge need for us to move quickly, because folks have been suffering already for a couple of months. And so, also wondering, I don't know if it's a side or later conversation, I agree that maybe we don't get, do it all quickly, but at least some of the business assistance needs to go out quicker than some of the other stuff that may take longer. I know the ADA was great. I think, I agree we need to make it easier for non-traditional businesses. I know there was a conversation about artists, but I think there's a lot more cash, cash businesses such as beauty salons, tattoo parlors, and so on, that we should support. And so that's on the small businesses and employee, I think we should move quicker than, as quick as possible. That's what I have on business and employee assistance.
Vice Mayor.
Is Chris Mackey around?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, yes. We'll get Ms. Mackey here.
Okay. Perfect. So I had a couple of questions for Chris. I wanted to see if we knew how many small businesses met the qualifications for the small business grants from the IDA, but were not able to secure any assistance because of the funds running out?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, the number that we were able to fund, or will be able to fund as we release it, is about 200 grants. There are approximately 60 that are left unfunded.
And do we know how much money in total it would take to support those remaining businesses?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, that number is approximately $600,000.
Okay. And in addition to these businesses, how many small businesses in Phoenix do you think could qualify for the IDA relief program?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, my goodness, the numbers that we sent out were a significant number that we think could probably qualify, but with the work that we've been doing with the IDA and the applications we've brought in, we suspect there are another couple of hundred that would have applied, you know, maybe 200 that would have applied had they had that opportunity, that fit those same guidelines that we brought forward to the council a few weeks ago.
And more or less, do you, and I won't hold you to this, do you have an estimate on how much funding it would take to support these remaining businesses, or the ones that we know could qualify for this?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, if we followed the same program that we did with the IDA, nearly all of, if not all of the applications were about $10,000 each. So if we multiplied the 200 out with that $10,000, it's approximately $2 million.
Okay. So I know that we're not talking about specific funding levels at this moment, but I definitely want to ensure that the Phoenix IDA Small Business Grant Program reaches as many as our small businesses as possible. There are so many of them that were already hurting before the pandemic, and now I'm sure are like on the verge of closing, closing their doors. And we all know and understand how local small businesses are hurting, and we all understand that we want to be able to support them. So at this moment, I would, I would like to make a motion to ensure that we allocate an additional $3 million for the Phoenix IDA Small Relief Grants Program, so we are able to get funding for the folks who already qualified and are awaiting a grant, and that we open up the program for additional small businesses that could qualify.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Do we have a second for the Vice Mayor? We are. Councilman DeCiccio has a second? Wonderful. And I think this is appropriate, because it was the one item that several council members specifically mentioned on Tuesday, so we did have more of a public, two council meeting discussion. I think this was the only one. Councilwoman Williams, yes?
Thank you, Mayor. I am willing to support that, but I don't want to set that as the absolute limit to go into the future, because I think we're going to find, there's a greater need than that. That was just one opportunity. This community is going to have many more people needing assistance, and I want us to have the flexibility to consider it in the future. But I will support the motion.
I will take councilmember comments on this motion, and then we'll take a vote on this motion, and then go back to our more general community investment discussion. City Manager, do you have a preference between a roll call and a voice vote?
Mayor, I think clarity with the public, a roll call would be a good way to go.
Councilman DeCiccio.
Yeah, I just, I want to make it very clear, I love this idea, but it was Benny's idea, just because I second it, you know. This is all her idea, and it came out of her office. And I agree with Alda, if there's a way to possibly get some more monies to them, that'd be great. And if there are additional money, if there's a way to leverage those dollars too, just to be able to expand that out, I think would be fantastic. We really do need to get some help out there immediately to the small business owners. And I'd like to see what the criteria is, as we move this thing forward, as to what a definition of a small business is. Because we saw at the national level, these large corporations, it was just, it was horrible, getting these monies that were meant for the small business person. And these large corporations are horrible lately. I mean, they've just become very greedy, and they've been taking monies away from the small business guy. And I think it's just despicable. And I want to make sure that whatever our definition is, it goes to what Councilman Carlos Garcia had said about it, you know, making sure it's a small business person.
So Mayor?
Councilwoman Pastor, yes.
Or, I don't know where the, goes to both, the question goes to both. Since we obviously know the business and employee assistance are the business area, and employee assistance needs money now, I would like to make a motion regarding, including the IDA currently, to, for the, including Vice Mayor Guadalupe's motion, but I would like to make a motion really to get the business assistant piece up and going.
Why don't we, I think, first vote on the motion, and then I don't think we would need a motion to ask staff to come back to us with the business assistance program outlined, but I will defer to the, well, yeah, we have a motion on the table, so unless you have a substitute motion, I think we should just vote on the motion. So any further comments on the motion on the table?
Mayor?
Okay. Councilman.
I think since the sentiment is that we do want to add more, I'm wondering, make a friendly amendment to move it to 5 million, and add some of the small businesses at the airport?
Oh, that'd be huge.
We, I think, really need to have some kind of public process and get through the details, so, I mean, I think the details really matter here, and it's a little bit hard to design a program from the dais.
Mayor, could I add, could I just make it maybe, could I help out on that a little bit, if that's okay?
Ed, could you come back to us with a program around this, very, very quickly?
Mayor, to your and Councilwoman Pastor, Councilman DeCiccio, and all councilmember questions here, what I'm hearing is a desire, first of all, to make sure that the group that was not funded but qualified in the IDA, and according to Chris, that's about $600,000, it should be funded. And then, secondly, to have another tier that would open up to those businesses. So we could do something where we immediately work to get that $600,000 group of 60 businesses funded, and we could come back to you on Tuesday with a plan that would show sort of a graduated, if you did 5 million, 10 million, 15 million, what might that look like? So you would have more information on that.
Mayor, I think that makes a lot of sense, so that we can really understand it and have a good discussion. I am not convinced the IDA program is the appropriate structure to address some of the other challenges that are facing businesses right now. And I think we have to be intentional that just because we have an existing program does not mean we can fit all small business needs into it.
So there's a motion on the table, so should we vote on the motion, and then...
All right, roll call.
Thank you.
Roll call on the table.
Mayor?
No, called, roll.
I just wanted, just to help Carlos, I mean, it is a genius idea.
Mayor, what are we voting on?
We are voting on a motion to have $3 million in our existing small business program, including funding the remaining eligible grants that applied for the IDA but were not eligible, there was not sufficient funding already allocated.
Thank you.
Councilman DeCiccio?
I don't know why we can't act on code. I think Carlos's idea is genius, but I'm going to be voting against.
Councilmember Garcia?
I made a friendly amendment to move it to 5 million.
Right. I like, I agree with it.
Mayor, can we accept that, to move it to five?
I believe it was your motion, so it would be up to you, and obviously, Councilman DeCiccio accepts.
So we can move it up to five, that'd be great.
And I guess, why don't we start the roll call over again, because it is not exactly the same motion, although it is quite clear it will be the same outcome? So could we start roll call over again with Councilman DeCiccio? And I guess, Councilman, could you just say for the, that you accept the friendly amendment?
Absolutely, but I could also, because I'm the second, I'm allowed to accept that we include the airport, it solves the small business thing. It's huge. It's a brilliant idea. I mean, it's brilliant, because it could go to pay down debt.
But the IDA program is not inappropriate. It caps it at $10,000, Councilman DeCiccio, $10,000. $10,000 is not going to solve the problem for the airport businesses.
Mayor, can I ask?
Councilwoman Pastor, yes.
Isn't the airport getting its own separate pot of money and maybe that's in a more appropriate place to look to help those businesses? I thought they got some funding as well.
They did, but it, it has to go for operations.
Yes, Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, the FAA funds to the airport are not allowed to be used for the vendors. It has to be used for city operations in the aviation department, not for contractors or vendors.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, as a compromise on this, considering our actions earlier this afternoon, there's something that would preclude us from coming back and expanding it to include that in a future meeting, once we know where, where we're at, at the airport in another week. We could go back, correct?
I think that would make perfect sense. I would certainly commit to putting this on the agenda very, next week, so that we can move forward with it. But I just don't think $10,000 per business is, the IDA program was designed with a very different goal than we need for, it is absolutely appropriate to support the essential infrastructure such as our airport and our business partners there. But I just don't think the IDA program is the tool. I will absolutely commit and believe that we can do it, but this is not the right way to do it.
Ma, ma, Mayor?
I, thank you, I agree.
Vice Mayor, yes?
Okay, so let me just repeat the motion. I, I hear what everyone is saying about the airport, I get it. So let me just repeat the motion. I would like to make a motion to ensure that we allocate an additional 5 million for the Phoenix IDA Small Relief Grants Program. So we are able to get funding for the folks who already qualified and are awaiting to grant and that we are open up, that we open up the program for additional small businesses that can qualify.
Second.
Wonderful, a great motion and a second. And if I would ask our city staff to begin roll call again. Councilman DeCiccio?
I'm going to vote yes, but Mayor, you gotta, you gotta allow us to talk it through too, Mayor. You have to. I mean, you can't keep shutting me down like that. It's not appropriate. I, I find it bothersome, especially on something this big. Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilman Noakowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pastor? Councilwoman Pastor? Councilwoman Stark?
Yes.
Councilman Waring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wardado?
Yes.
Mayor Gallego?
Yes. Tony, this is Councilwoman Pastor. Sorry, I was having some issues with my mute. I didn't have it, I had it on mute and was talking away. My vote is yes, but I also want to put on the record that we separate a fund to assist small businesses that have been affected by the decline in the airport activity. Thank you.
Second.
And Mayor, that motion passes unanimously. Wonderful, thank you. All right, so we will continue our conversation about business and employee assistance, including utility assistance right now. We will ask staff to come back with a proposal for aid for small businesses at the airport and put that on the agenda as soon as possible. I also think right before the Vice Mayor's motion, I may have heard Councilwoman Pastor mention rent relief, but my hearing has been imperfect lately.
Yes, I did. What, Mayor, can I ask, I need some clarity. And I always need clarity in my crystal ball, but I need some clarity right now. I'm trying to figure out, because the intent of this policy session was to look at the plan, study the plan, and then come back with ideas of what we also wanted additionally add into the plan. I was under the impression that we would give direction to staff, possibly put a dollar amount, see if that worked. And if it didn't work, staff would come back and say, this is what we think we need in the dollar amount. So, I need clarity of, as to, do we just go line by line of what we think is, is what our, our ideas are, or how do we handle this?
I think the proposal was that we share priorities and then staff go back and look at all of them and the relative costs and try to give us, come back with proposers, proposed numbers, so that we can get this all to fit together. Because frankly, the needs are many, many, many times larger than the available funds. And so if staff can look at it and really put costs on all of these programs, then we can look at it in a big picture way. I understand the need and the urgency on the small business program, but I worry just going line by line through and voting without a big picture plan will mean that whoever's last on the list, which unfortunately is city operations, it just seems like any number will never be enough. But we ought to balance the many, many needs and try to hit as many of the needs that council prioritizes together. The way that the council and staff work together on the homelessness plan seems to be a good one, where staff met with stakeholders, got a plan, and then looked at it all together so that we could address youth, families, veterans, and, and not just focus on any one group, but realize that there were so many different needs within the population experiencing homelessness. But I think, as City Manager, maybe I can turn to you.
Can I respond real quickly?
Sure.
The homeless piece went so well, the homeless plan went so well is because there was a lot of conversation with all the council people and how we looked at the buckets and where we looked at it and where, where we felt that the equity of the elements were going. The City Manager also sat down with me, and I'm assuming with others, and went through this plan. And so what I did is I took his plan and then I put where I, in preparing, where I felt that other pieces needed to be added. So that's why I'm asking for direction, because I'm prepared to have this conversation. And then on Thursday or Tuesday, for staff to come back, I'm even willing to put a dollar amount and staff to come back and say, no, it's going to cost, end up costing this much and it's going to end up costing more than what we thought, and then have that dialogue. So, that's why I'm, I'm asking the questions. So, yes, yes to you on the rent relief, yes, I was asking for rent relief earlier.
Okay, City Manager?
Mayor, I'm, can you clarify what you want me to respond to?
I guess, in terms of a process going forward, if this, if we have a discussion public today about all of the needs, could the staff come back and assess what were dollar amounts that make sense for the, the needs that we identify in reaction to today's proposed strategic pan, plan?
Yeah, thank you Mayor, yes. I think at the highest level, the question is, are these three areas the ones that work, community investment, city operations? And then, do people agree that we should reserve some amount and then we can have a dialogue about what that is? And then under each of those, I've heard significant council dialogue in two areas in the last 30 days, the business assist, actually in, in three, business assistance, utility assistance, and the homeless mitigation and care. So those seem to be very important. The question would be, are, are any of the other three categories in that area, where did, how does, how do we feel about the idea of figuring out what's needed to supplement food delivery? Or do we believe that that's being adequately handled through other components of the community? Is the whole distance learning and Wi-Fi access, where does that rate? And then, community testing, is that a priority? So, getting a sense from the council of where those fall in terms of priorities. And then, I could certainly come back as early as Tuesday, put some numbers to these that sort of show a priority, not assuming that my idea is necessarily the one that will end up there, but it would put a framework around it for the council to discuss then.
Wonderful, thank you. And I think on, on some of...
Mayor, you asked a question, but...
Please, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you. I'm interested in the community investment, but my top priority would be city operation. I think getting every employee tested to public safety, the PPE, and finding out how much we spend, how much we anticipate spending should be the priority before we assign numbers to the rest of us. I think that's more important. Our city depends on that funding and reimbursement. So I would like to have that made the priority and we talk about the rest of it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I think that you make excellent points. And on issues like testing for our city employees, that's such important information for us and for them and for their families, particularly those who are working and out there in essential work. I think it would be hard to think of a more appropriate expenditure for COVID-19 than to...
Mayor?
Councilmember Garcia?
I know, I know there's, there's an urge to wait, but I, I think Councilwoman Williams is right. I, I think if we can start putting some numbers to these, I don't know, Councilwoman Williams, you're, you're ready to, to give an amount to that. But I think we should, we, we could move, I, I know for myself, similar to Councilwoman Pastor, I've prepared and I have some, some thoughts of, of what we should spend. I agree on, on testing and PPE being one of our priorities. And if we could at least get a number going today, I think it would be helpful. I really, and I, I don't know if we're just moving into motions right now, but I, for me, water assistance or, and utility assistance and rent relief are really important as we're approaching May 1st tomorrow. I know the evictions aren't, aren't happening per se, but the stress is there. And so I, I'm prepared to make motions to move those things forward. So maybe we can highlight four or five things that we're ready to move on and, and we just move on them today.
Thank you, Councilmember.
So...
I certainly would like to see us look at, I mean, there are just numbers that I don't know that everyone has access to, like how much does it cost to make the buses safer? Or, I don't know that we've had a chance to get estimates about how much jail cost will be higher, but I assume everyone wants the jails to be, be safe. And so I would prefer we just stick to what are the priorities? And then I, we can look at a full plan together so that we know what the trade-offs are and what we are balancing. Because really, the needs are huge and it would be good to have a big picture look at this so that we have one plan as opposed to, to ad hoc.
But, Ma, I'm just saying, we've already been spending money and, and I, I'm grateful that staff has been moving, knowing that they could potentially put us on debt. And I'm also grateful that we're going to be able to pay some of it off now. But I also know that people need the relief now. And so I, I, it's 290 million. I don't think, you know, we did 5 million right now. Not proposing that we spend not even half of it or majority, I'm just saying, certain things such as utility assistance, rent relief, and, and what, you know, the PPE testing, the sooner we can move on this, the sooner we're going to get it out to people who need the support now, especially with the testing and the PPEs.
Thank you, Councilmember. Did I see Councilwoman Stark?
Yeah, I, I just had a question on that. So if we establish the priorities, and I agree with the utility assistance and the, and the rent relief, I think that's critical. How quickly can staff do an analysis to give us a realistic number? I mean, we could say spend 10 million on it and it actually might be 20 million. So I, I, you know, I have some ideas where I like to spend the money, but I still don't know what the actual cost might be to cover. And is utility assistant, is it just, is it for businesses and residents? I think it should be for both. So there's still some of those questions in my mind.
So Mayor, members of the council, that, that sort of feedback is really critical because it helps us know, clearly, we couldn't go and, and give you something on all 12 of these pillars right now. We would want to start with the, the critical ones. And what I'm hearing is small business assistance and utility assistance. We have addressed the homeless situation most immediately, but I hear Councilman Garcia's most immediate component of that of rent assistance. And then the city operations piece, to get our employees tested, to make sure that they're safe, are, are critical. I think that we could come back with some ideas on that next week, knowing, for example, if this is where we end up, that those three to five areas I just mentioned are of highest priority to the council. And then we'll keep coming back with the other areas with ideas as well.
So Mayor, if I could continue. So, going back to utility assistance, I guess I'd need to have some comprehension of how many businesses need that kind of assistance, how many residents. And if you could gather that, then we can create an amount that we need to fund. And then I agree with Councilwoman Garcia that we need to fund it as quickly as possible, make it available. But I, I really want to have a better idea of how many, how many, how many numbers so that you can figure out an amount to give us. And if you can do that by next Tuesday, that would be great.
Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember, yes. Or, I'm sorry, who was, was that, who was that? I'm sorry.
Councilmember Garcia.
Okay, Councilmember Garcia, go ahead.
We just went off the IDA example. And what we learned from that is that we don't know what the need is until we put something out. And with that particular program, we had no idea how successful, how many people were going to apply until we put it out there. And so I, I, to me, it's, can we put something out there already to start moving it? And we could definitely add more later. And so, if permitted, I'd, I'd want a motion to allocate $10 million for utility assistance and rent relief.
Second.
Mayor, Jim, may I say something?
Yes, Councilman Waring.
Thank you. So, I guess I would associate myself with the comments about, you know, I'd like to see a more comprehensive effort. You know, it is a lot of money. Councilman Garcia's point is well taken in terms of tracking it and so forth. That was frankly one of the comments I made to the City Manager in our offline meeting that Laura mentioned that I'm sure everybody probably had. I just, you know, I, I guess I would just prefer to not get into such specifics and not inflate the numbers, not criticizing any of the, you know, well warranted things that people are talking about doing. That's not the point. But a few more days of study couldn't hurt when you're talking about numbers of this size. So that would be my thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Waring. Please, Councilwoman Williams.
Well, do we have the money in hand? Or do we apply for it as we come up with a plan? And if so, if we have to get our submittals and allocation based on the total amount, how long does that take? I don't want to put us in a spot where we're funding money that we don't have.
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, in many, many federal programs, you actually have to apply to the federal granting authority. In this case, however, the federal government has sent the money to the chief financial officer who has it in hand. So we actually don't have that step that we have to go through, which will make it more quickly accessible.
Well, that's good to hear. And I'm hoping we're getting a little interest while it's sitting there, so we'll have more money to spend.
Denise, Denise is smiling behind her mask about that. I guess, Mayor, one thing I... I guess, Mayor, one thing I would add to this is in some of these cases, probably business assistance, utility assistance, rent, eviction prevention, we could spend probably as much money as we put out there. So it really does come down to prioritizing because I think we should just rest assured that we're not going to completely solve the need with these funds. So it really comes down to where the council wants to prioritize the money in this. I think we can get a pretty good handle on our employee operations costs with a little more time. Uh, I think as we've seen nationally from the PPP program and locally, as Councilmember Garcia noted, from the IDA program, that I don't think people have found the limit to the vast need in our business and employment community for assistance.
And, and Mayor, can I ask just a follow-
Yes, Councilwoman Stark.
So, for example, utility assistance, this is actually, you still have to relate back to the virus, right? It has to be related to the virus. It can't be people that were already in need, correct?
Councilwoman, that is an excellent point, yes. It has to be after the March 1 date that it happened and it ha- will, will have to be connected to the COVID impacts on the economy as well. Also in terms of utility assistance, we might think specifically, as Councilmember Garcia noted, of the city's own city services bill, which is water, sewer, and trash. And as the council has taken strong action already to defer payments on that, but there are other utilities that some other cities have included as well. With each other utility, electric or gas, you add the amount of money you spend to that and the speed with which you go through your funds. So there's a little bit of discussion there too, but we could certainly pretty quickly get to you the city services portion of a utility assistance program.
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski.
Uh, go ahead, Councilman.
Mayor, one of the things I believe we need to create is some type of matrix on any type of money that we're going to be giving out so that we don't get, get fined or that we have to return that money. So I believe the small business loans were successful because we had a couple of weeks to really sit down, talk to Chris Mackey, Juan Cegal, and come up with a plan with some type of, a matrix for people to apply and that they haven't received anything from the federal government, from other plans. I, I think we need to maybe take a couple of days to really figure out what those matrix are and I do agree that we need to come up with those top 10 issues that we need to take care of. And one of them is paying those electric bills and water bills for individuals that are out of jobs and stuff like that. I agree 100%, but how do we create that matrix that we need to make sure that we follow the law and that we allocate monies to the right persons?
Thank you, Councilman. I, I do think that makes sense and I completely support utility assistance. I am confident that we will approve a utility assistance program, but there are also things like, I believe most of the council has talked about wanting to support our students in schools. Wi-Fi is, is one way that we could do that or hotspots. I don't know how much that costs and I think just being able to collect, you know, is it doable? Are there partnerships that are possible? Um, I know some councilmembers have already been working on it, but I think being able to see the data ahead of time, how much it costs will help us make decisions. I also really appreciate the idea of community investment, food delivery programs. I do not know estimates of, of what the need would be. I suspect it would be larger than we could afford, but, but that would be good to know. I got some ideas when Tasha was speaking about domestic violence, about how we might be able to support the important efforts to fight domestic violence, but don't really know what the numbers are around that. And, and all of these are important and I think we will want to do all of them, but we ought to, to balance them together, so, uh, I agree with Councilman Noakowski.
Mayor?
Councilman-
Councilwoman Garcia. Yeah, so we, we've had this money for over a week now and I believe, I made a motion and there was a second, so I don't know if we're going to vote on that and then move on or are, is there still discussion on that motion?
Okay, what's the motion?
Oh, I guess we do-
The motion was to set, move $10 million for utility assistance and rent relief.
And I guess, Councilman, I would, I would ask if you would consider withdrawing your motion. We have now had a majority of the council say that they support utility relief, but that they would like the opportunity to include it in a comprehensive plan. So I, we can vote on it if you would like, but I would-
Yes, yes, Ma-
Ask me if you would.
I think this is urgent enough and then just hearing conversations like we've heard from workers across the city that they need this relief and like I said, I believe we're going to need more money in this pot and so I think it's urgent that we start moving on it and release staff to be able to start supporting people as soon as possible. We've had this money again for over a week. I feel like we probably should have got started with this conversation before we even got it, but now that we've had that money, um, I think we should move on it. So I'd, I'd prefer to vote on it and, and move, move this money quickly.
And Councilman, I would remind you that the plan we approved with homelessness included the ability for utility assistance as part of that, so that money is already moving forward and that has not yet been exhausted. And we had already put money into utility assistance through the community development block grant before COVID-19.
So that gives, Mayor?
Uh, Councilwoman Stark.
That would give us a little bit more time so that we could develop the matrix. I agree with Councilman Noakowski as well. So knowing that we already have money available for utility assistance, I think we should wait and get a more comprehensive look.
And I should also mention that utilities have stepped up and made contributions to wildfire to provide utility assistance as well, um, so, and, and they have made pretty significant contributions. Councilman.
Uh, Mayor?
Uh, DeCiccio.
Uh, I'm going to support the motion and here's why. I know some of the individuals that are involved or that had the, their water not cut off, but drastically reduced. They can't even take a shower. And the sooner we get these people going, get them back on their feet again, I don't know how we can even wait even more than a day for some of these individuals. We've got people about to lose their home. They're losing everything and as we sit around and debate things, we're creating a crisis in them and it only gets worse. It's an exponential crisis, it is. When you've got financial difficulty, every dollar matters. So I'm going to be supporting the motion. Uh, I think it's a great idea. I really do. I think this is what this money is supposed to be for. It's supposed to be for those people that are hurting and I say let's get with it.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, city manager, could you give us an update on the water program and status of connectivity?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just operating off of memory, we currently, based on the council's action, there are no Phoenix water customers, no single-family residential, or I should say, let me start over. There are no residential water customers who are shut off or on restricted flow. We have, um, last I looked, remember seeing it, it was, oh, Karen Peters is here. She has the numbers. She's rescuing me. Karen. But just to emphasize, there is no one who is shut off or on restricted flow. Karen?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, thank you, Ed. So it, that is correct. There are not any customers today that have low-flow devices installed. All the ones that were previously installed have been removed and those, all those individual, all those households, I should say, are on the payment plans that we've discussed previously. Approximately $2 million is deferred currently. Um, I can, I, I'm searching for the exact number of customers that that represents, but it's, it's about $2 million.
Uh, thank you, deputy city manager, for, for that update.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Pastor?
Yes. So there's 2 million, it's $2 million of people. There's no flow devices out there because our constituents or the customers put themselves on a plane, payment plan that now has deferred into September, uh, which, that's my understanding of what we did and what we voted on.
That's correct.
Can I get, okay. So there are people occurring debt right now, they're just deferring it.
Correct.
And so, yeah, so I guess what I'm trying to point out or say is I believe people do need utility assistance. There's a motion on the table right now. We can vote it up or down, but it, we, we can vote on it. My point is if, if we don't, if that doesn't need the 10 million, we can always move the 10 million out and shift it to another priority. But I feel like right now that's a priority for people at this moment.
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman. I just thought it was important to clarify that if Councilman DeCiccio has heard from people who are on limited water, they are not Phoenix residential customers right now. Um, with that, are, I guess, council ready to take a vote? Councilwoman Williams.
Mayor, thank you. I, I'm not going to support the motion. It's not that I don't believe in it, it's the fact I think it's premature. If they're on payment plans and they have no income for the next three months, I guess we need some guidelines. Can we get this again? Is it a one-shot deal or do we wait until we have a total and then we can figure out how we distribute the money? I, I think it's a little premature to do it today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any comments before roll call? And again, I want to clarify, I've heard from councilmembers who absolutely support utility assistance, but want to do it as part of a plan. So with that, we'll turn to staff for a roll call on the motion to allocate $10 million for utility assistance.
And, and rental assistance.
Okay, um, can the maker of the motion repeat the motion?
Yes, it was utility and rental assistance.
Thank you.
Councilman DeCiccio?
Yeah?
Councilmember Garcia?
May I explain my vote, Mayor?
Please.
Again, uh, voting obviously yes on this, but what I want to do is free staff so that they can move and start helping people as soon as possible. I trust that they're going to make the right decisions and they know, like we said, there's already $2 million in debt on the water side, um, and I trust that they can move quickly and help people as soon as possible. Um, we need to move this as fast as possible as people are looking, um, to, to stretch every penny right now, so I vote yes.
Councilman Noakowski?
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to explain my vote. I'll be voting no and it's just to be a good steward and make sure that there's the matrix education process in this and also a Spanish-speaking process that the Spanish speakers understand if they're applying, these are the consequences, if you're reimbursed and if for some reason you don't follow these rules, then you're going to have to pay us back and then we put them in a bigger hardship. So I want to make sure all those matrix, all those bells and whistles are in place and people understand what they're, um, what they're getting. Thank you. With that, it's a no.
Councilwoman Pastor?
So I'm going to explain my vote. I am voting yes and I'm voting yes because I trust our city staff that are good stewards of the city to come up with the, the guidelines and the ability to put a rental assistance piece and a utility assistance piece together and be able then to help our community that is hurting at this moment. And it's not only rental assistance, it's, when, when I say utility, I'm not talking about individual city utility. We also have small businesses hurting and paying their bills, uh, which include our utilities. And so I'm voting yes. I believe that staff could come up with the guidelines or the criteria in order to move this program forward.
Councilwoman Stark?
No.
Councilman Waring?
No.
Councilwoman Williams?
No.
Vice Mayor Wadado?
I'm going to, I'm going to explain my, my vote. I'm going to be voting yes on this and it's for the same reasons that Councilmember Garcia and Councilwoman Pastor outlined. And we have so many, we already had so many people on the verge of being homeless and losing their homes and not being able to pay their bills before COVID and now that, that situation is getting worse. Um, so I think it's incredibly important to start moving this forward. Thank you.
Mayor Gallego?
No.
Mayor, that motion fails five to four.
Thank you. Look forward to very soon supporting a utility and rent relief program as part of a comprehensive plan. Uh, I think Councilwoman Williams suggested we go to city operations for discussion, so, did anyone have anything in city operations that they wanted to flag as a priority or missing?
Mayor, Mrs. Tolda.
Councilwoman Williams.
See, I, I don't know how much it would cost us or if we can work out a deal with either the drugstores, ASU or someone and the methodology to get all of our employees tested. I think that would not only ensure our safety, but really help promote everybody, I mean, everybody's going outside, going and that would be of real value to the whole organization. So could, could it come back with a call procedure that could make that happen soon?
Mayor, Councilmember Williams, yes, that sort of direction would be helpful to us if we, if we set as a, if the council set as a goal, we would like to as soon as possible get all employees tested. Uh, we can cost that out and identify the time to get there and the providers for it.
I just think that it's extremely important to send the message throughout the community.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, Councilwoman-
We'll vote again.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Stark?
So, um, just a quick question. Under public safety measures, you're talking about the way we social distance, how we're going to operate our facilities in the future, correct?
Councilwoman, um, Councilwoman Stark, which one were you looking at?
The public safety measures.
Okay.
Or would it be under cleaning and sand? I'm just thinking that in the future, if we can look at offering more online services so there isn't as much public contact and I'm not sure what that would be under in the operations, but, you know, because we're talking about possible upgrades to some of our, um, systems and, um, in my mind, it is a public safety measure trying to promote social distancing, but I'm, I'm not sure what it is, but I want to make sure that's a part of what we look at.
Thank you, Councilwoman Stark. Under city operations and building a COVID-19 resilient future-
Okay.
-the issue of teleworking, ideas like 911 telemedicine, employee workspace retrofit and public facility retrofit, public transit retrofit, I think that captures what you are expressing.
So we can do more with the public, they can do more via computer, signing up for programs, things like that, so, yeah.
Yes, Councilmember, that's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. Then it's covered. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I, I hear we got great response to some of the things that planning and development did with online expansions and online plan review and, um, perhaps some of that can be helpful if we go into telemedicine or if our courts might help get an order of protection for someone at a remote site.
Right.
Should that be needed.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Thank you. Mayor?
Council, uh, Councilwoman Pastor?
Um, this is for-
This is for Ed regarding the testing.
Yes.
And the testing for all employees. We know, or I know, because several labor unions are being tested at this moment. And so, the test costs about, and it depends on what type of test you're also administering.
That's correct.
Because there's two types of tests being administered. But the cost is around $51. So, how many, I want to say we have 14,000 employees, but I might be off.
That's a good number to use just for round estimating, yes.
Okay. And we know that 5,000 are already, are getting tested. So, about 9,000. So, that's like almost $460,000 for the testing.
At $50 a test, yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to know, like, how quickly can we administer that, and how quickly can we move that?
Mayor, Councilmember Pastor, we have a group working on the whole issue of testing. And as you indicate, Councilwoman, there's two kinds of tests. There's the serological, which is testing for antibodies. And then, there's the positive-negative, I call it, where they test to see if you actually have COVID-19 at a point in time. I think part of what we need to work through as a group and get direction from the council is, are we interested in both tests for our entire employee population? And then, what sort of standard of testing are we comfortable with? So, as in my understanding, there's not necessarily a standard uniform serological test, antibody test. Do we need to wait for one of those to be the one that the city will pay for or not? And then, do we want to have both tests, pursue both tests, or one or the other? But those are sort of policy questions the council will ultimately need to decide.
Okay, all right.
But I think that's exactly the right question to ask about employee testing that you're raising, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Mayor? It's Councilwoman Pastor again. Sorry. Uh, City Manager Zucker, what I would like to know is, there's these buckets, and has been broken up, but some of the ideas that I have fall under the category, but they're not listed as one of the buckets. So, what would you recommend for me to do to include this in the plan and see if others are, would agree to some of the items that I put in?
I guess I defer to the mayor in terms of process for this meeting as to whether you should just share them all here. I don't know how many there are. Or all council members can get me their ideas, and I'll work to incorporate them in the next version of a document.
Okay, all right.
Uh, Councilwoman, first, thank you for your leadership on testing and keeping our employees safe. And I think, assuming, yeah, I think it would be fine if you wanted to share some of your priorities that fit in these buckets. I would also welcome council members, if they want to do it electronically. But I think the more we can publicly let our community know what we're considering, I think that is very valuable.
Okay. So, I'm going to go back to community needs, and I'm just going to go through a list. Mitigation and care for the homeless population. In that one, I think we need to look at possibly showers. So, where the population is, do they have the ability to take a shower? Public housing, the public housing piece, or affordability housing for, right now, we are in a crisis, and there's an issue, but how do we solve that now and then be able to expand in the future? And one of the items was our gated alley program. In particular, the CAS area, Councilwoman Garcia had asked for this through Block Watch grants. But I think with COVID, we could probably do some getting the alley or the fence gated and get that up and going quickly. And obviously, food delivery and all the other places. I would like to see some nonprofits released for the refugee and asylum. And probably everybody else has ideas.
Those are wonderful suggestions. Thank you. I think several council members gave very, very good suggestions on Tuesday, and I hope, I think that they are reflected here. But if yours is missing, I think it is fine to share it now. And I think the city manager would be open. If you think of something on your way home from the grocery store about food delivery, then feel free to suggest it. I do want to say, I do think it's responsible to reserve some money for future needs. My personal experience of COVID-19 has been that there just needs come up all the time, and there are, every time you try to solve one problem, it reveals another one.
Mayor?
Councilmember Garcia?
Yeah, but I want to go back to some of the things that were talked about or mentioned earlier. I think on affordable housing, public housing, I know in last week's, while we weren't able to secure properties or more long-term investments, and making sure that we have more units available, I think we should do that, or think about some sort of incentive that we can support folks for more affordable housing. On the food delivery side, I think there's a lot of food banks and schools that are already stressed that we can be supporting. The school districts have been doing amazing work getting food to folks. I think we could support them. St. Vincent de Paula, St. Mary's, a lot of the folks around CAS have been supporting that. I think food accessibility is something we really need to focus on. I know you mentioned distance learning and collaborating with the schools. I think public Wi-Fi overall is something we should be looking towards. It's happening in other parts of the country, in other parts of the world. If this is an opportunity to connect not only with students, but for others, that would be great. I think the testing folks have talked about, we should get PPs and testing and masks on buses and anywhere and everywhere we can, especially as we see the governors moving to reopen things in a couple of weeks. I think it would be a priority to move quick and make sure that we can get the right protection and testing for as many people as we can. On technology side, I do think, I think staff's already thinking about it, but looking at workspaces and how we telework better, infrastructure at the city. I would love to see, similar to what the legislature has, for us to be able to obtain public comment in this meeting. We had two folks speak today. I don't think that's enough. This is something that's really important. We should have wide community engagement, and we need better technology to make that happen. The jail systems were brought up earlier for a long time. I've thought that we should have better communication to the jails, and specifically, so that we don't have to use NCSO at this point and expose people further. If we could use this opportunity to make sure we can reevaluate or reuse our video court system through our public jails, so we can release folks from there and not have to double-book them into NCSO, I think would keep people healthier and expedite process and keep people out of jail for longer periods when they shouldn't be. And yeah, and I'm just closing off with saying, double, again, I think the equity piece of it is going to be very important. And then, I really do think we need our own public health experts. We keep making decisions such as the homeless sweeps that are happening, or the decisions we're making around CAS without a public health lens. We need someone in our staff. We need a department that's thinking of the public health, and we don't have that currently. So, again, would reemphasize that we need that expertise that is within the city. And then, just looking forward to next Tuesday and next Thursday, I've been wanting to get into this conversation, and I hope we can expedite it or do homework from now until then, so we could come ready on Tuesday to get money to people's hands and the support and resources they need. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, council member. And your comments about housing reminded me, we are scheduled right now in June to have an affordable housing update, but perhaps we need to move that up, because there are some ideas of things that we could do that would address affordable housing. And it sounds like eviction prevention, rent assistance, all of that is very much on this council's mind. Any council member comments? All right. So, we are, our poor staff is going to have a very, very busy weekend. We are grateful. This is a huge amount of work in a very short time, and we are grateful that we have smart folks with expertise who can answer the call when a community needs them. But we send you lots of caffeine and maybe some chocolate for many, many busy days. Anything, city manager, final comment?
Mayor, no, thank you. This has been very helpful to hear people's priorities, their thoughts. Just being realistic about what we're going to be able to come back with Tuesday, I think we will focus, I would plan to come back with a proposed allocation of the 293 million. Again, understanding that what I'm going to present to you is inevitably not correct, but it gives, like, a trial budget a place to start. Based on this information I've heard, we're going to focus on trying to come back with as much information as we can on business assistance, utility assistance, and employee testing as possible by Tuesday. If we can get to others, we will do that. But I've heard all the feedback, and we'll come back with a plan that I think gives the next level, understanding the urgency on particularly those items, to be sooner rather than later.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you all for bringing wonderful ideas and real passion for helping this community in a difficult time. With that, we are adjourned.